I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Nelson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
Workman.
Here. All righty, up next we've got a motion to approve the minutes of the January 3rd, 2024 council meeting.
Second.
Yeah, any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the payment of the bills that appear on the warrant sheets. You have a motion to approve that, please? Can we make the motion?
I'll send.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Workman.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, public comments on agenda items. You guys want to say anything? If not, we can talk as we come to it. If you want to say anything, get it off your chest, you can. Uh, up next, we've got communications from the mayor. So I got a couple of things to let you all know about. One thing I do want to give a shout out to the eighth grade boys and their Rett State. Congratulations to all of them. I happened to see Rat yesterday at Subway. He was there with his dad, so I thanked him. So we definitely want to give a congratulations to them and all the hard work that they've done. Uh, and then also, February 12th, I will not, unfortunately, I will not be in town, but that would be the day of the groundbreaking for the, starting on the dirt work out at where the subdivision's going to go, Baxmire. So I wanted to let you all know, so if you're in town, you go out there and get a picture taken, you're really welcome to.
Is there a time for that?
Uh, no, I don't know. Do you all, you know anything on time?
For what?
For like when they start doing the work or anything?
I have no idea.
When the sun rises.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I just know. But this is it.
Verdicts or?
Uh, yes.
They're going to start on the sewer.
Oh, okay.
Um, also, I also want to give a huge thank you to Janet for some hard work, also to Angel. Darren has also helped with this. Uh, we have pretty well gotten this stuff wrapped up with FEMA. And we're looking at getting about forty-nine thousand dollars roughly from that. Now, that's not, that's not including what we've already paid for the, for the trees that insurance has given us. So we're looking at altogether through the storm and everything, seventy-five thousand dollars back from what we spent last year. So about forty-nine thousand dollars is coming. Coleman is to finish up the work. I spoke with him. Darren has also spoke with him. We're not paying him until he starts getting the, the trees. There's a couple of trees left, a couple of stumps left. He's also got to plant some grass as well. So once he starts getting that done, then we will pay him. He's, he's understandable, understanding about it, so I wanted to let you all know about that. And then also, you've probably seen on Facebook that there was some car burglaries that happened on Monday night. And so I talked to Brian about it. We'll tell you, they are juveniles from Decatur. They're not from here, in assumption. They're from Decatur. Decatur Police is working with Moogaloo Police and then also with us. They are in the process of getting some fingerprints. They have some already. That's how they were able to trace them back to who they were. But another thing that Brian has told the sheriff and also Moogaloo Police has told the sheriff, the sheriff of Shelby County, to let them know when they have something like this happen because Christian County's nearest cop was in Kincaid. Shelby County's nearest cop, granted, I know this was at three-thirty in the morning, was in Shelbyville. So Brian has talked to Sheriff Kettlecamp and to say that when there's incidents like this, to call and let them know. They, Jackson and Brian have their phones at their, at their bedside so that they can come and, and be here. So they didn't know anything about it until, one, they, they had a couple of calls and they saw things on Facebook. So they're working on getting that communication lined up. And it's, it's the same with Moogaloo. They're talking to the sheriff. They didn't know anything about it until, until later as well. So hopefully that, hopefully they get arrested and, you know, it's Mike, Gary's dealing with them, so. Um, also, I'll also bring up, I've talked to Brian. There is a, a post that was done in regards to a loud vehicle, loud music. I have never, it's been happening, I guess, before I come home, but I've never experienced a car going around my house. But I guess it's been, been a kind of a nuisance to a couple of people. Brian is, is aware of it. He's going to try to, you know, get this person, but he said, you know, he's got to see it in order to, or, you know, hear it in order to, to get them. But from my understanding, it is a, a high school kid that's doing that as well, but they are aware of it. I mean, I also told him too, you know, I mean, I hear more of people in their trucks, you know? Like I'm in a truck pull right there on First Street. But I mean, it, it just doesn't bother me. I mean, but I, I do get it. Some people don't like the, the loud noise and the rattling of the windows and such, so. Uh, also, I have, we do have garbage on the agenda. We don't really have much to add, but Wallace is, they're happy with how these are going. They're definitely open to, you know, working with us on, on any sort of, you know, agreement. But they're picking up the garbage. They're, they're happy and I wanted to let you all know about that. So they are coming to the committee of the whole meeting in a couple of weeks, so. Other than that, that's it for me. We'll turn it over to the city attorney. I think everything I have from week two. We're working on it. All right, let's hope we can plan. Up next, the treasurer. Got anything?
Um, I just have one thing.
Okay.
Just to let everybody know, if you're available on February 13th from one to six, there's a blood drive at the middle school in memory of Conrad and Keegan. So if you guys can go donate, that would be awesome. Sorry.
That's perfect. Alder Kirstens.
Do we have any updates on the J-turn?
No, I don't have anything. I can, I can find out. I'll talk to Senator McFlur's office and see.
I thought it was spring.
Well, so, um, one thing, back in August of '22, they mentioned eighteen to twenty-four months. And we're hoping for the winter to have some sort of a public meeting for it. I mean, we're in the middle of winter now, but no, I will, I'll find out and I'll just let you know. Okay, city clerk, you got anything? All righty, up next, we'll go to new business and Ron, engineer Juan Lengner, your update, please.
Okay, um, so the sewer project is continuing. The crew's been on site here the last couple of weeks again. We've got an invoice that you'll be discussing shortly. For that, with that invoice, we're about thirty-seven percent complete. The work's proceeding down La Rochelle Street, if you get over that way. The water main replacement project, the crew has not been on site yet. They keep telling us they're going to restart around mid-February, so hopefully in the next week or two, they'll be back. That project is about twenty-seven percent complete by what's the invoice and the quantities. The water treatment plant project, if everything goes right, by the end of next week, we will have advertised it. And our goal is to get bids by the week before your April 3rd meeting, I believe, so.
If you have a little bit of an update and see if we correct or wrong. We're still waiting on the courtesies for all those people to sign it.
Yes, the, uh, he's got most of the signatures for the contract and I think he's distributed the deed pages too. So hopefully those will be back early next week or the next week that we can, you know, wrap it up. And yeah, the title company is ready to close this first, we get all that.
Okay. All right.
Uh, that's all ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Janet, would you like for us to just take a roll call on each one?
We used to do it separately.
Separately, okay. We can do it separately. Just wanted to make it easy for you. All righty, up next, we'll need a motion to approve the water main replacement project. That is a Petersburg pay, pay request for three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents. Total loan dispersment, nine thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for a total of twelve thousand, seven hundred, sixty-five dollars and ten cents. You have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right, do you, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the lead service line. That is a Petersburg pay request for twenty-six thousand, two hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. And a loan dispersment for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents for a total of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred, fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Make the motion.
All right, do you have a second? Uh, any discussion? Seeing none?
Who's second?
Oh, I'm second.
Thank you.
Seeing none? Roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, next, motion to approve the sanitary sewer project. Uh, we have the Petersburg pay request for ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents for, and then the loan dispersment of a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents for a total of two hundred and two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. You have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Workman.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Next, we have motion to approve the Shastine invoices. That's invoice number fifty, sewer separation phase two. That's nine thousand, seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Invoice number seven, six, four, four point oh one dash one nine, water system improvements phase two. That's for two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Invoice number seven, six, four, four point oh two dash one three, water system improvements, lead service. That's for seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and nine cents. Next, we have invoice number seven, six, four, four dash four three, water improvements for the water plant addition. That's for eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety cents for a grand total amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents. You have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, last month, nobody wanted to buy an old dog's truck. Now this month, they did. So we actually got quite a few bids. Uh, so we'll open them up. Looks like we've got five here. So the first one. Uh, we have Brady Sloan and his bid is five hundred dollars. Next. Uh, we have Kevin Frye and it's five hundred and one dollars. Oh, we got our own attorney here, Steve Hedinger, for one thousand, five hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. Take it off your bill. Steph and Di, if you get it, it dies on your way to Chatham. Don't blame us.
I already drafted the bill of sale, so.
Okay, and then this one, uh, we have Kenny Smith and his bid is three hundred dollars. And then we have Clay, oh, Clay McCloud, fifteen hundred dollars.
I withdraw my bid.
You withdraw your bid? Okay. So that makes it then Clay McCloud for fifteen hundred dollars.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, I, I don't know. Is he a, is he a high schooler or something?
No. Not in Moogaloo.
Oh, okay. Okay, so just need a motion to approve the bid of fifteen hundred dollars to Clay McCloud. All right, any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please, Janet.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
All righty, and Janet will reach out to him and work out the time to get all the information. Uh, up next, motion to approve the audit for sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars from LMHN. Need a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right, do you have any, do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, and the audit will begin, we're just, we're just ending here pretty soon, and in a couple of months, end of April. Uh, up next, a motion to approve the purchase of tires for the squad car. Uh, that is from, uh, would be Brian's car, for nine hundred and seventy dollars, please. We have a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do you have a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Reed.
I'm staying.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve purchase of equipment for the service bed truck, roughly for three thousand dollars. This is some new equipment that Jack is interested in. This was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. Uh, items that he needs to make everything easier on him. Uh, some of it includes a saw, um, and this other missing tools. I don't have my notes in front of me. You guys, do you want to add?
There's like drills and wrenches. There's special wrenches that we have to have.
And one thing, um, we, we were going to use the points from a credit card on that. So kind of let you know, you know, we had, uh, is it about fifteen hundred? Thirteen hundred?
We used eight hundred and twenty-five this month and I divided it out between every.
Everyone, okay.
Everyone. We still have like eight hundred and seven.
Eight hundred and seven.
So if we want to use that, eight hundred and seven.
Well, I was just saying, yeah, because we had to use it by the end of the month or something like that. Wasn't there a stipulation?
We had to use like half last month and then whenever we want to use the next part of it.
Perfect. So some of this will be paid, basically, this is for free from all the points that we've earned in cash back off our city credit card. So we just need a motion to approve.
So, so you want me to take the, the rest of the money that we have on the points and put it against this?
I, I would think so. Does anybody have an issue with that or anything?
No, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Workman.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, up next, um, I got a phone call from a, an individual who has a autistic child. And she has asked that, that a sign be put up. And so I, I had no problem with it. I talked to Darren about it. And he actually had directed me to this form. Uh, the city of Carroll Stream uses it. And then there's also some policies in with the Illinois Department of Transportation for it. So anyway, this form was actually the, the best that Darren had recommended from Carroll Stream to be used. And there's items in there like, um, you know, deaf child, autistic child, blind, blind child, disabled child. But they're only up from basically the time when the child turns two to the time that they're fifteen. So it doesn't stay up forever. And the individual that decides, you will need to basically fill out this form all the time, every year, so that we have a record of it. So then if they ever move or if the child is never, it's no longer there, then that sign was then, will then be removed, so. Just need a motion to approve this.
Is that, uh, who, for who regulates that? Does it then take it down?
Yeah, Darren would take it down the streets. Uh-huh. He'll put it up. He, uh.
It's already been put in.
And has it, okay, so there you go.
I'll make the motion.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, here comes some fun stuff. Uh, Angel, I brought this up to my attention the other night, uh, yeah, well, you know, a couple of Saturdays ago. For Assumption Fest, they have their date set. This year it's going to be in the spring. And it's going to be May twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Um, I will also give you all a heads up that I may not be able to do the opening ceremonies that day on the, uh, the twenty-fourth because of adjournment. So you typically work late, so one of you, it's, I might have to convince. We'll go with the newbie Ross. We'll, we'll see. Um, but anyway, I think it's great that Assumption Fest is going to be in the spring. I don't think you need to worry about the heat or anything, hopefully. Um, so anyway, just need to approve the street closures for Assumption Fest. It's pretty much going to be the same streets that we've closed in years past. So we just need to go ahead and approve that, please. For May twenty-third to twenty-fifth.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Right, any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve a temporary liquor license for Assumption Fest. Janet actually corrected me on this. I guess we'd never done it before in the past. I thought we did. So I just left it on the agenda, on it. See if I have a problem with that. Go ahead and we'll make the motion to approve the temporary liquor license for Assumption Fest.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do you have a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor? Uh, gee, that's all. I get work, I get my job mixed up, so, because I'll be doing committee. All right, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Well, that's just going to make everything confusing if we start doing that. He's, he's going, he follows the pair, say, I, I, you know, but that's, this makes everything confusing. Why break good tradition? All right, up next, a motion to approve a thousand dollars for advertising for Assumption Fest. This is what we put, this is what Assumption Fest puts in the book. It's got all of our names. It's a great contribution to Assumption Fest and what they do for the community, so just need a motion to approve a thousand dollars, please.
I'll make the motion.
All right, you have a second? Okay, thank you, Ross. Um, seeing any discussion? Roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yeah.
Workman.
Yes.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the school resource training and travel in June for the central. So this is for our school resource officer. And I've talked to Brian. I've also talked to the superintendent. And they have no problem with paying half for Doug Allen to go up to Bloomington. So, and I've also talked to Brian. We've added an extra day, so he will be staying at the Marriott where the conference is going on. He needs this conference in order to have his service hours. Be a hundred and forty dollars a night. It'll be, he's going to have an extra day from what we previously talked about, committee of the whole. So it'll be from the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and he'll be home on the twenty-first, so three days. And the training, he's going to an extra day of training. That costs nothing for us. It's free. But the training as a whole will be roughly around two hundred and fifty dollars. What the school has asked us to do is for us to pay the whole amount. So once all the invoices get in, this hotel, travel, things like that, get into us in June, we then send the school a bill for half of that and then they will pay it. So I have their work and then, like I said, I talked to the superintendent. I've also talked to one of the board members, Chris Jess. He doesn't have a problem with it as well, so they're, they're just not going to put it up on, on their boat yet until we get it. But they said, not a problem, so I wanted to let you know about it and ask for approval. Just have a motion to approve a training for the school resource officer and travel in June.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Gary. Um, roll call please. Seeing any, no discussion? Roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Workman.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, up next, a motion to approve the purchase agreement for buyers at the Baxmire. Before, oh, go ahead.
Before we get that motion, I just want to, um, point out to everybody that the, the version that should be in front of you uh, was changed today just from last version you've had in two places on.
I don't think, I don't think we have.
You don't. You have the clean one, that's what Janet passed out.
Oh, okay, okay.
In case you were wondering, in case it means anything, um, paragraph B ba, or five, basically says that anyone buying a house has to finish construction within eighteen months of closing. In paragraph three, the closing will take place after the roads are constructed, or the road is constructed. So paragraphs A and B of five both said it was eighteen months after closing or within eighteen months of completion of the roads.
And, you know, Janet, do you have it? I don't think we have it.
This is in the previous version that.
Oh, it's in the previous version from last month.
And so I just made this change.
Oh, I got you.
So anything you were looking at before, right now, had that language, in case anybody remembered it. I just want to explain that I made that change because it was not supposed to be there, so.
Okay, but we were all looking.
And, yeah, I mean.
I, I got you.
Don't want to be accused of remembering anything by it, so if you want more explanation after the meeting, I'll be glad.
Okay, so.
So basically, it just says that eighteen months after closing, you have to have a house constructed. So, um, the, it has the roads determined when closing, or the road construction determines when closing will be. So both of those concepts are still in there. They're just in the right order.
It will only impact people who are buying right away. Once the road's there, that won't matter, because it's kind of like, you know, you could, you could claim a lot now, but the closing for this wouldn't, I mean, they'd pay their earnest money and sign this paperwork, but the closing where they would get the title and everything would be, you know, either, you know, forty-five days after the execution of this or when the road is finished. Because, you know, the, all the infrastructure will go in and then the road will be the last thing that's built out there, and so.
So we just need a motion to approve the purchase agreement for buyers at the Baxmire subdivision, please.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Workman.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have the motion to approve the Baxmire subdivision restrictions and covenants agreement. Joyce, would you like to go over that or anything? You all have it here in front of us.
I think this is exactly what you've had in the packets.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it gets, it gets filed over at the county, right, Stephen, with the plat, probably next week.
Yeah, definitely, if anyone buys a lot, they're on notice that, that these covenants apply to that lot, so.
Can I ask a question? Who's the architect committee?
Okay.
Good question.
Well, okay, so we're actually going to talk about that at the committee of the whole meeting. Are we, my theory was, was that I wanted to kind of get this stuff done and then work on it. So this will be a committee that will be made up of, you know, like, two people from the city council. There'll also be some people from the community. One person, like, would have a, you know, a home that is out, that's out there. Joyce is going to fill in that spot.
Somebody from zoning, somebody from the council. Janet.
Yes.[1768.41]
You know, it, just a kind of a, a group of people like that, and it's not, I mean.
It's not a true architect person?
No, it's more just to make sure that the plans that their builder has and where they're gonna set it and everything complies with the covenant and our zoning ordinance. Mainly, like in Dedrick, it's just the city clerk, the person, one person is the architectural committee. So, we were thinking it'd be better to have, you know, a little broader representation.
And since it'll be like, be kind of structured as like a subcommittee off of that, like, for us. We all, we all have to do a resolution on it. You know, one of the things in there is that we have to make sure that, you know, sorry, guys, you don't, you don't get paid for serving on this. And also, like, what, how do we handle if there's a conflict? So, let's just say, somebody wants to fight on their house, but the architectural committee says, no, you need parakeet. You know, does that then go to the council, you know, just kind of, I was gonna write it out, and then I kind of thought, well, it might lead into some other little areas to have fingers. So, the plan is to bring it to the committee of the whole for discussion. We'll have something kind of typed, typed out with talking points and take it from there.
We, we hope the covenant is clear enough that most of those kind of things would be.
Exactly.
There's one thing you may want, on three, you might want to check to worry about. I'm not real sure how you put a satellite dish underground. I don't think you're gonna get a real good reception.
Well, we, yeah, that got kind of stuck in there. Though, the idea, I think there is, that we don't want satellite dishes stuck on the houses, that any of the communications would just be run underground.
Well, if you have direct, I mean.
Satellite TV, yes.
Yeah, as I said, so how are they gonna get satellite TV or over-the-air antennas, because they have to be high point installed.
Yeah, we hope to have two different options for fiber optics out there. And, you know, we're, I'm hoping that that would cover internet and TV communications.
A lot of people are doing more, I mean, a lot of people go over there broadcast TV now. Ironically, it's come back full circle after they cut down my tower.
And, I, that, you can also attach to your house, inside like a window. My brother has that. He's got it inside his house.
Dishes have to be out.
Well, yeah, no, because I have a dish, yeah. I was just gonna say an antenna. Those of you that can't get three, but he's, he gets the other channels. So are you ready to vote on the covenants?
We need a motion, right?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve it. Do we have, you making a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do you have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Sullivan?
Uh, yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yeah.
Workman?
Yes.
Alrighty, this next, we're gonna, actually, the next three, we're actually gonna take off. I will tell you, Assumption Community Pride will be paying, they're gonna donate to help pay for the, the advertising. So that is something we will not have to worry about, so definitely grateful for them, they're gonna take care of that. And then also, we're going to withhold the ambulance TIF. For one, we want to kind of hold off until we get the loan done, so that we know how much that we're really able to, to hand out. I did, I tried reaching out to Alex to give him a heads up. He didn't call me back, I left him a couple messages, so. I mean, I was pretty, I explained it pretty good in the voicemail to him, but we're just gonna hold off for a while. And then the fire department has to ask for their TIF application to be withdrawn. So, those three, we're gonna move down to, the garbage contract, just kind of want to.
I got a question on the ambulance. When will you be, when is it, we're gonna revisit that?
Well, so, we're gonna talk at the committee of the whole, we're gonna have some paperwork, you know, kind of some ideas from Abby on what we can give out. You know, we have this low, like, basically a budget for the TIF from the bank. The bank basically had said, until we get the loan, the money from the loan, to hold off on giving out money. Is what Mike had said, so, I think we just should hold off for, for a week, for a month. But it should be, I don't, I don't, I mean, if we can't do it, we might be able to do some this fiscal year, some now fiscal year. But we should have a, kind of a spreadsheet, a better understanding of where we're at financially in the TIF fund and stuff.
Should I be involved in that too?
What?
Should I be involved in that too?
You should be, yes, yes, you should be getting, think, Abby had given, she sent me a spreadsheet, I just haven't seen it, so I will go ahead and forward it to you. She sent it to me this evening, a little after five, so I'll forward that to you, and then we'll discuss it at the council, at the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Alrighty, you have the most direct by the garbage contract, I just left that on there so that everybody, I mean, we do, Wallace is happy. They are gonna come to the committee of the whole meeting, to kind of talk about, you know, where we should kind of go with them. Yeah, I've had some people not happy with garbage service. I did send you all a copy of a letter that I got. I never responded to him. I haven't, I never responded to any of the things that was on Facebook about it. I mean, it could be until, even to the point to where, you know, I know that we had promised X number of, of houses. Yeah, I don't know, you'll kind of just talk about it and committee of the whole just kind of let things roll, because like I said, Wallace is happy, he's got things off for right now. And we'll maybe look at something down the road for him. So, just gotta kind of leave it as is right now and take it from there, so.
Do you know, do we need to clarify then for the customer or the, the ones that are upset? That they do not have to?
No, I think we should just, we honestly just leave it right now. Because one, one of the things is, is that, you know, we don't want it to where everybody in the house is like, well, I don't want garbage now. So if we, you know, just kind of let it go with how we are, we'll address it down the road with them. If we end up having to give a subsidy to Wallace, like we did in advance.
Yeah.
Then we can just kind of move on from this. I talked, so, I, I talked to Sean Conlin about it, the mayor of, of, week one. And she had the same issue. She's like, you know, basically, she said, pick your battles on this. She, you know, she said some people were refusing it, some people, you know, she even mentioned one person, her family was getting free, you know, free garbage. She didn't even know it until they had switched everything over. I'll also tell you, I talked to the mayor of Stonington, and so what their council did was that they opened it up to anybody that wanted garbage service. And they said that was the worst decision they made now, because now they got three companies in, they come in three different days, they tear up their streets. And what's happened is that basically the, the, the city has been cut into a third. So, some people are paying now as much as $30 for garbage compared to, you know, paying, you know, 18, because now that company has gotten a third, you know, two-thirds less, so they have to make up that difference.
That was their problem, they shouldn't have listed, gave that many licenses.
They, they should not have.
That's why you only have one license.
But they, they, you know, they're kind of like, well, everybody's wanting choice. I mean, I, I've got hounded that. You know, everybody's wanting free choice, well, this is why we have the one.
Yeah, so there is one individual that's posting on Facebook, that he takes his garbage to some dumpster, Decatur, Moigore, somewhere like that.
Yeah.
He actually does it. He fills his elderly neighbor's trash can up.
I know. And I don't, I don't get.
She has one bag a week and he fills her trash can up.
There was one lady that, what's going on about garbage, and I, I was far away from just saying, I'll pay your garbage for a year. You, $18.54, I, I get it, people could be on fixed income, but, you know, it's, it's, people are making it, quite honestly, people are making it more of an issue than what they are. I mean, as you all saw from this complaint, I mean, he even had the nerve to send us his tax bill. Of all the money that he pays in taxes, and he went on about other issues, but that's a side point.
Well, I don't think we realized, or I didn't realize until this started, that there is a lot of farmers in, that live in town, but their farms are out. So, I see no problem if they want to take it out, you know, out of town, I mean, out to their farms. I don't, there's nothing wrong with that. The problem is, is just don't let your garbage stack up. Don't leave a bag in the street or anything like that, but if you want to go put it in your grandma's next door and she don't care, that's between those two. It's, I don't care.
It is, but our ordinance says you have to have it per residence. That's where we're gonna run into trouble.
The ordinance says what?
The ordinance says you have to have.
It says that you have to be picked up by a licensed garbage hauler. It says nothing about that you have to have garbage service. We do not have an ordinance that says you have to have garbage service.
When we revisited that, that is how it was written.
So, Selena and I, we've, we've talked about this. I mean, it does state, I don't have it in front of me, but the 414AA does state that household garbage does need to be picked up by a licensed hauler. So, in turn, what that theory behind it is, is that yes, if you have a household, that does need to be picked up by a garbage hauler on it. Does anything specifically state, I mean, I, you dip into the weeds of it, but, and I agree with, with what Selena's saying. One of my things is that I don't, I'm afraid.
This is only a list of 10.
I know, it's only a list of 10, and I agree.
This is only a list of 10 people. 95% of people want their garbage picked up.
They do.
They don't care who picks it up, pick up your gar, they just want their garbage picked up. It's not a problem. But, I understand completely, if you want to take it to your grandma's next door and dump in your little Walmart stack, there's nothing wrong with that. Let them work it out, not us. They shouldn't be forced to have garbage service. And we don't have an ordinance that says you have to have garbage service.
Can we clarify just the little verbiage in the, in the letter from the citizen about the, the power, the power supply?
I don't know what that was even about. I mean, I.
That's where they switched.
That's where we switched.
Home Field sent letters out after that. You have to write, when you open the letter, it explained it, and it said if you did not want to do this, then you were to contact Home Field. The whole reason what this was.
Because they had, we had the option, so we didn't make anybody.
We didn't make anybody change anything.
No, we didn't make anybody. We chose, as a city, Home Field has our carrier. Because, I can't remember the guy that was here, presented it to us. Last year, Amarin's supply ran out, so they had to go outside and get other suppliers. Hence, they passed the cost on to us. My Amarin bill last winter was, was way up, because they had to go outside. The man that come spoke with this, I just don't remember his name.
Reg.
He said, Home Field will lock in a certain percent, and I can't remember what it was. If they have to go out and get a different supplier, they run out, then they will not pass that cost on to us. That's why we signed a contract. And everybody got a Home Field letter.
We posted it at least three times the.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that was, I mean, I'm sorry, but he was incorrect on that. But I imagine, the person, when you get angry, it just escalates.
It did.
It just escalates, I'm always gonna get mad about this. The color of the paint on your house.
Yeah.
It just escalates.
It did. And even went on about the street stuff.
But, I think sometimes too, just didn't know the facts.
Yeah.
So, hopefully we can, we want to work with people.
Most definitely. Alright. Up next, discussion and action is necessary on sewer sanitary phase two projects, as I have been properly brought to the board. Looks like Ron is out, so we probably don't have anything else. Discussion and action is necessary on the Baxmire subdivision. You kind of want to talk about, you might kind of need to, kind of just do a vote on the name of the road. Baxmire Lane was what was suggested.
Do we want to do a vote on it or just a discussion?
Yeah, a vote is fine, you know, yeah, no harm. And then the 911 will then give the addresses to the Baxmire Lane. So if you would like to make a discussion, a motion to have the road name, anything?
Yeah, that's, Mark had, the way he drew up the plat, the final plat, he just put Baxmire Lane. Baxmire subdivision is the name of the subdivision, and that's John and Julie's wish to honor those people.
I didn't care about the road name, but the addition part.
They took a chance on us way back, and so we wanted to honor them with the subdivision part, but the road. Well, and the, after, you know, down the road, the road will be all that's really, you know, probably won't, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then the lot numbers, that, we're just thinking, the lot numbers could be the address, you know, is probably what we'll end up being. But, anyway, if that has to be voted on, then that's, that's kind of the.
I think it's just a consensus matter, you know, everybody comes up with a, you know, an, an agreement that, that there's, you know, it's not really an important part of the whole project. But I think a vote would be appropriate. If somebody has a different idea.
Put a bunch of names in a hat and draw it.
There you go. Remember that to the letter of your.
Yeah. Alright, we just make a motion to approve the name of Baxmire subdivision, the road into Baxmire subdivision as Baxmire Lane. We have a motion to approve that, please.
I make the motion.
I'll take it.
Alright, perfect. You guys, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith? Yes. Workman?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alrighty, comments on non-agend items?
Well, I, I had a little more on the Baxmire thing.
Oh, go ahead and talk.
Mark indicated that Amarin wants to order the lights for the street, the streetlights. They said they're back ordered, a lot of, you know, they want to just get them ordered. And we have a option of a real industrial-looking streetlight, or one that, I don't know if you can see this from here, but it's one of these kinds that looks like.
Kind of like the one at St. Mary's, like you said, John.
Yeah.
I think they are, or something like that.
Kind of like that. It's called an acorn globe.
Yes.
And if they do this, there'd be seven of them. If they did more of an industrial that's quite a bit brighter, there'd be four of them. And, you know, we're kind of recommending this style rather than a real bright. The, the installation cost is the same for this style versus the other style. They're, they both run about $5 a month to operate. So, we're recommending that we go with these, this style, make it look nice out there. I also wanted to mention that Derek mentioned the ACPA is gonna pay for the marketing. We have gotten quotes from Imagine This down in Effingham, and they'll be helping us with a flyer. We'll end up with.